Good evening and welcome to the monthly meeting of the Acton School Committee, May 14, 2019. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any adjustments to our agenda?
There's one. We do not have a need for number 10 executive session this evening. We'll scratch that from the agenda.
Okay. And that's it for adjustments?
Indeed.
Okay, then, any comments from the public? Then let's move on to our celebration of learning.
Sure, if I could just kind of preface the celebration of learning tonight is John Hobart and Ann Solinger. They are going to come in live from wherever they are, and I'm sure they'll let us know when we get them up here on the screen. I'll move. John and Ann are very active in our community and own a business in Acton and have two boys who are currently in school here, and they have a daughter who will be coming here, I think, within the next year or so. And they had some really kind of cool ideas as we've been talking about how the school can actually... We kind of see it as a hub of the community, but how it could actually be a draw for people that are entrepreneurs to come to a town like Acton such as they have, and how the school benefits their kids. And I just thought they had some really good ideas that they might just share so that the committee would be up to date with some new young parents in town that have some ideas, and we can just kind of see where it goes from there. How's that sound?
Good.
Okay, so I'm gonna let Mike... Whoa, they're right behind me! Did you see my bald spot? I'm moving.
Hello.
Hey, how are you guys?
Hi!
Good, can you hear us alright?
Yeah.
Good.
Hang on. So, I think the genesis of this is I was talking to Mr. Ross, I think I spelled that right, call him, about kind of what brought us to Acton, and a big part of what brought us to Acton, you know, having a young family and a bunch of kids that are about to go through school, and now a couple of them in school, was the appeal of a small town, a couple thousand people, a school with a couple hundred kids, pre-K, pre-K being a huge piece of it, through grade eight. Teachers working at the school who might have gone to the school, some of them, a tight-knit community. And then we also looked at things like, you know, the fact that there's high-speed internet in town, that it's a safe town to raise kids, a great place to raise kids. And I think that it came as a surprise to us, the kind of glue that the school, the role the school plays in the community. And I think, for myself, what we hoped was going to happen is exactly what did happen. You know, moving to a great town, a great place to run a business, a great place to raise kids, and a school that's doing a lot of innovative work. And we're excited to tell people about Acton as a place where you can live from home and get a great quality of education for your kids that's just far enough but not too far from, you know, some urban centers. And we, and I think when Mr. Ross and I were talking, I think that, I felt that there was an opportunity to use the school in a way for marketing to other couples like us, and maybe for couples that are a little bit younger than us and who are maybe down in Portsmouth or...
In Portland.
Or up in Portland who are struggling to make ends meet because of the cost of living, and maybe paying too high a price to, you know, when there's, you know, this great town of Acton just down the road. And I guess we're just looking for opportunities to give the school a shout-out, whether it's on Facebook or wherever, and see if we can't let people know that we have this great asset in our community and such a great place to live.
Yes, so we originally were renting in Acton when we were having our oldest child, and when we were looking to buy, we definitely wanted to make sure that we stayed in the town. And a big part of that was because of the school. So, pre-K, like John said, was huge. The parent-teacher group and being integrated with that part of the community and seeing all of the wonderful programs that the school offers and having it be that, really that heart, that community that ties a lot of us together was something that provides a lot of value to me in the life stage that I'm in right now. So yeah, anything that we could do to help promote the community to encourage other folks like us to come to town, which is something that we found valuable in.
Yeah, we work pretty extensively with some software companies based out of Portsmouth, the P's Trade Port and stuff like that, and there are, there are people that are commuting. We have friends that commute from Wolfboro because they want the school there, and they commute, some of them commute even all the way to Boston. And I think that, I think that it would do the community a service, and I think we could probably help in promoting Acton as a place for young couples working in the new economy to live and to raise their families because the school is such a great asset.
That's great. Thank you.
I don't know if you have any questions or anything like that. We were just really excited and we think that the school's doing such a great job, and that's why we're here.
Well, thank you very much. What, how would you go about this? Would you, you put a video together, did you not, or...
We have done a few videos for Get Out To Vote. We also have some video footage that we were looking to put together kind of for more of a year-round campaign to just promote awareness of the good things that the school is doing on the curriculum as well. So that's one area where we think we can get the word out and get community more involved.
Yeah, less of a sales pitch and more of just letting people know about some of the, you know, some of the neat stuff that's happening at the school, you know, whether it's in art or music or outdoors. Just to play up some of the, some of the great aspects of having kids, you know, raising kids in Acton, and letting that travel social media on its own just through, you know, through the... I'm trying to figure out how to talk about social media posts in this context, but when, you know, when Ann posts something on social media about something neat happening at the school, that travels, that travels pretty far, and it raises awareness of, you know, what a great community Acton is outside our community. And I think if we, if we made a point of doing that, we could raise awareness in, you know, from Portland to Portsmouth about, you know, try to get people to consider Acton as a place to move precisely for the school. Because we know a lot of couples that are in our, you know, our age bracket with young kids that are really struggling to make things work in Portsmouth and Portland just because the cost of living is so extraordinary. And I think that they just, people just don't know. They're just, they just don't know that there's this fantastic community tucked away right in the middle. And we'd certainly be happy to play a role there, whether it's interviewing teachers, talking to students, talking to parents, just to raise awareness about this incredible thing that a town has built, that you administer.
You can see just from their enthusiasm why I thought I'd have Ann and John, you know, be here with you when they're traveling with their business tonight, so they couldn't be here in person.
We are.
Where are you? Where are you?
Omaha.
Omaha.
Omaha. What do they do?
What's that? Oh, so the question from Jeanette was, "Well, what do you do?" "What is your job that takes you to Omaha?" is the question.
We run a data science and machine learning company for marketing. We help companies better market to their customers.
Yeah, so, I mean, something that... We keep, I guess we keep a fairly low profile in town, but we actually run one of the fastest-growing privately-held companies in the United States. And it's based out of our house in Acton.
Uh-oh, surprise!
You might also say that.
We work in, I mean, we do, we have an electronics lab. And we work primarily in the field of like data science, artificial intelligence for marketing.
Interesting.
And so we have a vested interest in seeing the schools succeed and seeing, you know, and I think that we actually have a lot that we can bring to the local high school as well in terms of coaching robotics and that kind of thing. We have, and we're excited to do that, maybe as our kids age a little bit.
That would be great, because that goes hand in hand.
Our company is all remote and distributed, so all of us work from home offices and co-working spaces.
And Acton is a fantastic place to work from home because much as it may not seem that we actually have pretty solid internet in town, which means that for a lot of these remote work opportunities, and there are tons and tons of them, Acton's a great place to set up shop. So that obviously builds the tax base in the town, which further helps the school. And bringing more young couples working in high-tech, I think, would be...
For the state in general.
Just good for, yeah, good for the state, you know, to help combat the brain drain. It's really hard for us to hire in Maine because, you know, Cambridge is just down the road and Silicon Valley's a, you know, a short flight away.
You used the term "the new economy", and, you know, you are an example of the new economy, being able to have such a prosperous business and working right out of here in Acton, Maine. You could be anywhere you wanted, is what it sounds like, and you chose to be here. And I think the shift needs to happen with the decades behind... The kids that we're raising now, your sons and your daughter, the jobs and the career opportunities that they are gonna have when they leave Sanford High School and then, or and/or leave college, they don't even exist yet. We don't even really know what that's gonna look like for their future. So can you just think of the opportunities? A lot of us still work from a model where people go to work and come home, you know, kind of work on Monday through Friday and they have some weekend time. But things are changing quickly where that doesn't have to be the situation, and people can choose their own kind of work existence and where that's gonna be. And I think it's super cool the way you defined yourselves and that you can do it right here out of Acton, Maine. I'm not sure what the next step might be for us, but I just wanted to have the board be aware of these kinds of things that happen right here in this cool town.
Hi.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the next, what we could do in terms of taking action for next steps. We interviewed a couple of the, a few of the teachers from the school, so we have some footage there. And our initial idea was to do maybe a quarterly video once, you know, once every three months throughout the school year just to raise awareness in the town and hopefully outside the town about some of the neat things that are going on at the school, from pre-K through to robotics, science, maths, that kind of thing, just to let people know that there's a vibrant school tucked away in, you know, a beautiful town of 2,000 people.
Well, that was my secret, so I don't...
I know.
Jeanette's a little worried. We don't want too many people from the cities coming here.
Because they all want to change.
They want sidewalks.
They would need a bigger fire pit and a bigger rescue.
So it's supposed to be "Acton", you know?
I think what, I think what's really cool about this is that there are so many people in the community. They're very supportive of our budget. You saw the outpouring of people for our budget meeting. They come and they support the school, and they have for years and years, and a lot of them are in the older population. And I think it's, it's really a shame that they don't have the opportunity to see what really happens inside these doors. And I've said that for so many times. Sometimes people, when we used to have the referendum, they'd just vote yes or no, and not a clue about what was actually going on in the school. So I think any way that we can promote and show people some of the great things that are happening inside this building and would be really great.
Oh yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
Well, we'll be to help however we can, and I guess we're gonna turn this back to you, but yeah, thanks for inviting us into just for...
Yep, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming in tonight.
Okay, yep.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I'm shy.
Lights.
He's like that.
I thought it was good to get that out there.
So yeah, pre-K through eight is fine.
And I think they're...
It's the high school student that cost us. Every time we add one, 10,000.
I count all towns about 2,000. Next thing you know, it's 30,000. Okay, so let's move on now to number four, unless you have any more discussion you want on presentation. We just had, anybody else have anything to add?
I do have a question, because we have such town knowledge here. Is there a Chamber of Commerce in Acton or was there ever? Was there ever economic development seat or anything like that? No, never had that one.
When we first moved here, I sought out other businesses to see if there was like a business-to-business networking thing, and everybody had said, "No, if you just go to Sanford." So I figured with these guys, it could change the game because they really are in the... There's another couple that runs their business in Acton as well that's pretty big, so... That could change.
And what about Pender? She's been putting out blips on schools around the state for things they're doing. I wonder if they sent something to her as parents?
Interesting.
If she'd put that blip out.
Yeah, that whole idea of celebrating your school.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they have what it takes to make it great.
Right.
Whatever the messages we decide to put out there. Great idea, Lori.
Yeah, I've seen her putting several recognitions out from schools across the state, from the DOE.
Right.
But if they sent it to the DOE.
Right.
As a parent.
Plus, she's a big tweeter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so she's social, our new commissioner.
I follow her, which is...
Commissioner Macon's a pretty 21st-century commissioner. So is using the social media that they speak of.
Yeah.
You know?
Is it something that, I don't know who would head it up, but where you get them involved? And they said they talked to teachers, but community members need to get pulled in too. I mean, is there some sort of meeting that maybe somebody wants to set up just to get a bunch of people together to brainstorm ideas?
Certainly, this is just a seed we're planting.
Or to build a foundation?
Yeah.
Well, this could be a subcommittee of the school committee. We can make one.
We have to have, we're gonna have a workshop we're gonna talk about in June for July, maybe that's part of our topic. That'd be a great day-long session right there. I can help pull that together.
Yep.
Yeah. Because it is that new economy mentality of you can live wherever you want to work in some areas. I mean, if you're gonna do something with people, you gotta be with the people, I've heard in the ITech field.
Right.
And if people are choosing Acton and bringing, and they got a couple of great kids in our school.
And I think maybe discussing with the people who don't like newcomers coming in, like, the benefits for them.
Who's saying that? This is the wonderful thing we have got.
My mind runs on money.
There's a few, okay.
I'm looking at the cost.
I do feel like the town has mentioned in the past couple of years about trying to figure out ways to draw businesses and whatnot.
Business, because they don't bring kids. Businesses that don't bring kids, the brick and mortar. It gives jobs.
Do they bring sidewalks?
No, I don't want a sidewalk. Now, the planning board has a lot of building permits out at the moment, right? Am I right? There's a lot of building going on.
Yep. We're a little off-topic now, but...
I don't know where, I can't see them yet.
Okay, well, you know what? I think if we bring it back to Student Center, any kind of a committee or workshop, if it benefits our future kids of Acton for the kind of work they may be involved in, we definitely may want to look at it from an educational point of view of the jobs for the future.
Yes.
It's gonna look very different.
That's really how we should look at that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, then, let's go on to number four, and I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All look in favor? Five and O, okay. We'll start with a report from the superintendent.
Sure, just got three quick things. One, I want to publicly thank Andy for all the hard work that he's done in the field up on Route 109 so that our girls' softball team can actually have home games. Unfortunately, it's been a rough spring. I mean, it snowed this morning on the way into work, so we haven't had to have many games because Mother Nature hasn't been working with us. But Andy's now got that field in a position where if we do have a sunny day and we can have a game, we can play at home. So I just wanted to thank Andy because he's been up there doing a lot of work on that field for us. The Odyssey of the Mind team has reached their fundraising goal, and they'll be leaving next Monday, the 20th, for East Lansing, Michigan. We wish them the best of luck at the world competition, and we have a small group of kids that are in their peer group that'll be waving goodbye and having a little goodbye for them as they get in their cars and leave on Monday, and that'll be good fun for us. And lastly, we have a special ed review that Sharon's done a great job arranging, and Andy's been helping with physical plant to get us set up, and that's this Thursday.
Yep, and so I think I put a copy of the agenda for the day in your packet. So you're certainly invited to drop by or show up for the exit interview. The exit interview is scheduled to begin around 1:15. And basically what they do at that exit kind of meeting is they talk about what they found preliminarily, and they kind of give us, you know, feedback on the things that we're doing well and some things that we could improve upon. So we'd love to have you join us if you'd like.
Looks like, well, looking at the schedule, that looks like that would be the best time to try to come.
I think so.
Yeah.
And I was gonna say with the, Mrs. Prey, the special ed, I see a weekly activity session with occupational therapy with the kindergarten. I think that's a great idea.
Yes.
Yes.
She's been doing that all year, and it's really a good strategy to kind of spread the, spread the strategies and skills to all the kids so that it carries forward when they go to...
Grade one, grade two.
Especially if they decide to write instead of always using a computer, right?
Now, you mentioned it was $4,500 raised by the, for the OM. Now, they said they, how did this occur?
They've done multiple fundraisers.
So what I mean, did that come from just the fundraising here? And you had mentioned about something about the, they did a grant parents and whoever relatives contributed to, what was that?
Oh, okay, so that's, well, he does a couple of different things. One, the, I think that second part was our Wildcat Run, which was a PTG fundraiser, which I reported out on last time. That was a lot of fun, and that was for one of the PTG's pilot... They wanted to try something new as a big fundraiser for the school, and they did quite well with that. So the PTG did that in April, this Friday before April vacation. The OM team did a series of fundraisers since they knew they won the state's champion about a month ago. They didn't have a lot of time. The exact amount that they raised, I don't know exactly what they had to raise, but they reached their goal. And this weekend, they did three fundraisers, one being a comedy show. They did the white elephant. And last weekend, they did the lock-in.
Pancake.
And they did pancake breakfast. So by the end, by when they visited with Kim and I on Monday, they basically said, "Mission accomplished." Plus, they had been donations from the school committee and some other things got them to where they need to be. So they're able to take that trip next Monday. Because there wasn't a lot of time to raise the money, and they did a nice job.
And they still have some, another donation from the town that'll come down on Friday, so they'll be...
How much money did they actually need to get out there?
I don't know, the total. I mean, it's quite a bit, like, just for the rooms alone.
Oh, I know, I know, I can imagine, yeah, it must be a lot.
Somewhere it's around $4,500 or more.
Running a couple of vans.
That's all?
They have the vans and the transportation, the tolls.
Doesn't sound like much, but yeah.
Well, they gotta get the kids out there. They gotta lodge them, feed them, and get them back.
It doesn't sound like much, $4,500.
Well, they didn't have a lot of time to raise it either, though. That was the other thing, is they won in different states.
I know, so the cost doesn't sound like a lot of money, $4,500 to do all that.
To get the kids out to East Lansing and back?
Trip and do these different things.
Driving.
They raised a lot more.
They raised more, yeah.
They raised a lot more.
That's good.
Overall, by the time you added all of their, and all the business donations that came in and the raffles they had and stuff, so they, they had certain things they had to meet, and they did meet them. And now they're, they were working on the funds they needed for their whole travel point. So, and I think they're gonna, they're gonna be okay.
And then what else caught my eye here on the financial resources there about, we're gonna receive some money?
Yeah, from the state, the reimbursement.
From the state, because we have, what, three students?
Yeah.
On superintendent agreement.
I can explain how that works for people that maybe didn't see my report. I learned at a superintendent's meeting, I've been trying to go to as many of the York County superintendent's meetings as I can, which is about over the course of a given year, probably half of them. For one reason or another, it just isn't gonna work out in the day to get there. But I went to one, I'm glad I went, because the conversation was about low-receiving, towns that receive, what they call low receivers for state subsidy in towns that receive more. So there's something called a superintendent's agreement or a transfer waiver where kids can jump the border of their town and go to another school as long as a superintendent's agree. Those have been in place for a long, long time. So we do have some students who live in higher-receiving districts, and they come here to this school. For whatever their reasons are, we've accepted them, and their SAU has let them go. Well, if there's a subsidy that's a difference between the two towns, the lower receiver will receive the subsidy that would've went to that town because that kid's coming here. So I gave you an amount, and there was it close to $12,000?
Yeah, $12,000.
So the difference is, and I discovered this, so I said to Kim, "Hey, I learned something new that might be worth checking out." So she called up her friend Tyler at the state immediately. I mean, she could've put the phone down. Next thing I know, she got a check like three days later, and that was worth going.
Keep going to those meetings.
So a lot of people didn't know about that. I wasn't the only one in the dark. Other people were surprised, they're like, "Really?" It had been on the books since the 1980s, but not, people weren't accessing it. It doesn't work in reverse, though. If we send the kids somewhere else, no, no, it doesn't work in reverse. So we're a low receiver, so if an Acton kid goes to a high-receiving town, there's no money to send. It's a state money, it only goes one way, and it works to our advantage.
Yeah, it's like $12,000 something.
That was interesting.
Good deal.
Well, I just want to ask Mike, what are we doing then if the MLTI, we... What are we doing budget-wise? Because you don't have to buy the devices or whatever.
Well, it's not actually 100% confirmed. Do you resent the message stating that you're going to be trying to push an extension?
That's what I thought I heard.
So, because we have our budget so early compared to other districts, I had to prepare for the work.
Yeah.
So I budgeted for half of the buyout, because you can buy out half this year, buy out half that year. I also budgeted for the repair, because they were gonna make us repair the devices as well. Little ding, little dents. as well, little ding, little dents. So I put all that money aside, so if that is unnecessary expenditures, it can be used to pay for some of the initiatives that we were going to do, but we couldn't afford to do.
The network system?
Yeah, like the E-rate, because we still have $24,000 of E-rate that we can get subsidies for, but we need to give, we need to pay for 60% of that, of what our bill would have been. So I've already got the balls, the balls in gear to purchase all new network equipment, but we need to have $10,000 in hand to make that a $25,000 purchase. So with the offsets of the MLTI program, some also some software number modifications on license seats, we should have more than enough money to cover that, and perhaps buy a new copier for the main office that keeps crapping out.
Okay.
Very good.
Anybody else have any questions from any of these administrative reports? Okay, then, let's move on to number six, which is progress monitoring reports.
Miss Lodge's to do, I think, are you going to use this? I'll move.
Yep.
Very good.
Is that on?
No.
Another coffee break.
Okay.
Okay. And just be, I just have a couple of slides. I shared this with staff last week, it's on the SWCC data that we've been collecting over, over the year, and that's the system where we enter any minors or major behavior referral forms that are written against the school's, school-wide expectations and classroom expectations, so, just, because you, a lot of times you hear about the kids that are misbehaving, you know, it seems bigger than it is. So when you look at the data, it's, it's interesting. BlackBerry, right?
Yeah.
Oh, now I don't have to go, now there it goes. So, we look to make sure that we have a pyramid that has at least 80% of the kids in green, and then the next pocket would be the yellow, and then hopefully the smallest pocket is the red. And we look at the data at the bottom, I know it's kind of hard to see, the numbers are small, so it shows our enrollment at 241. It shows we have 190 kids who don't have any referrals in the system at all, and only 18 kids that have one. So all of that would be your green, that's that percentage of kids. So it's 86% of our kids are zero-to-one referrals. And then when you look at the two through five, those are the kids that are in that yellow band. So we start to get a little concerned, we look at that data to see who those kids are, and right now, there's 18 of those kids. And then we look at the red, which of those kids has more than six? And right now, we were looking at 15. Some of those kids have recently moved out of the system, so when I looked at who those kiddos were with six or more behavior referrals, this is the group of kids. And so we were looking at this at the staff meeting, and some of the kids in the blue that are highlighted in blue, they're on, they use a check-in and checkout form, or some other form of a DRC, a daily report card, where a teacher is checking in with them regularly, giving them feedback after every 45 minutes or so. And then we have the green highlighted kids who already have an IEP, and they are also on some sort of a check-in and checkout or a daily report card. And then we have the highest student right now in purple, third grader, isn't, is not on any check-in and checkout, and he's got quite a few referrals, as you can see, 45 major referrals over the school year. I will say, recently, we just put him on a check-in and checkout starting this week, so it's been a couple of days, and, but what we see is, with that frequent feedback, when you look at those kiddos, the last referral some of those kids have now had, you know, back in March, some of them the beginning of April, so we start to see, hopefully what we should be seeing is a decline, because we're reinforcing the expectations, whether it's in the classroom or in the school, every 45 minutes or so, every block, they get feedback around lunch, around recess, specials, and then every block of time in their classroom.
That's good data.
Is that like average, say, 86% are you, hardly any problems?
That's what you hope to see, yeah.
Is that in most schools, though, you've heard?
Eighties. Eighties the mark, yeah, we're at 86, so probably a little better.
Yeah.
Just like a year ago, we didn't have any of this. Remember, we started with school-wide and classroom, now we have the data pieces really coming together. So now you can identify by number, we can identify by name, you've got a handful of kids that struggle. And then what do we do, and as Lori said, we're going to check-in, check-out. Jen's done an excellent job putting together a check-in, check-out program for us. She's the facilitator of that process, and is making a difference for those kids that are on the bubble. That group that's kind of moving up to the other color but needs to be pushed back down to green, and you can see it's, it works. Any school, you're always going to have a few, that it's just, it's just not going to be within their wheelhouse to be able to follow the rules. The idea is to identify who, and then positively reinforce them, so that they start to say, you know what, this isn't sad to be back in the green with the rest of these kids. And now we have the data to suggest that we're heading in the right direction. But it's a continuous process, every year.
Very good.
So, big thank yous to Lori and Jen, we're putting in a ton of time with kids right now on this.
Just send that over to Kevin Perks, please.
Yeah, do it like this.
Yeah, what a great way to be able to, to monitor it with all this data, too, because I remember, what was the year before you came on board? You know, the chart would look a lot different. If we were in fact counting, which I don't think we were, but if we were, it would look a lot different. So it's great to see the improvements that PBIS is bringing to the behavioral part, because the more you improve that part, the more you improve the learning climate and all the things that go with it, that make it best for the kids.
And these kiddos, the kiddos that, when you give them feedback, they haven't heard good things, you know, when you give them that positive feedback, they're not used to hearing that.
Right.
So it's really hard for them to hear that. And so we were just talking today, I got a cute note this week from one of the kiddos up there, Jim got a note today from one of them, so, you know, that's starting to, it's starting to, somebody cares about me, and, and.
There's also some language and culture we've developed. I've been doing, trying to finish up my observations to write the summits for the year, and pretty much on par, I need to have those done. Memorial Weekend's kind of the threshold to get all this behind me. I was doing a classroom observation in the elementary wing, and I was watching somebody who's new or not, not using the PBIS language, and watching mostly a group of young boys take advantage of some situations. Of course, I don't say it works, I'm watching the observation. But it's just one of those little things, so instead of commenting all the time with the shh or whatever, all you got to do is this, I can walk into the room with 250 kids in the gym and go, look what I'm doing, because they're not all looking at me, but once they look at me, and I go like this, that means zero voice. You could hear a pin drop within seconds. So one of the things we built for the culture is, instead of going shush and please quiet down, Sharon, all I got to do is go, hey, kids, look! And I guarantee you, everybody in that class would have went, oh, God, I'm talking to my friend, I need to be listening to my teacher. So we built a culture where the kids expect it, and we're just going to make sure our adults are always just going back to that toolbox that we've taught the kids, because they respond very well to it.
It's great to have that continuity from pre-K through eight, where everybody's using the same language and the same program. It's awesome.
Yeah, I think that really helps.
Okay, let's move on then to, thank you very much, Lori, that was very informative and good, good stuff to see and to know. Committee reports, long-range planning committee.
We met tonight, and we were just going over exactly what do we have for our long-range. So of course, we were talking about paving the parking lot, and so we, the budget did pass that we could get more money for this year, and hopefully by next year, we'll put another bunch of money and then be done, and be able to get the, get that project done. What we do want to work on, though, is we found out that two of our skylights in the building are failing, so we want to get them all taken care of this year, and we should be able to do that out of the operational budget. And so instead of just doing the two that are failing, because they're all the same age, we're going to replace all of them, which was just what, how many?
Uh, there's nine of them.
Nine.
Plastic bubble ones, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Plastic is getting pretty bad.
Yeah.
So that's about it.
Any questions, Lori? No? All right, then, we'll go to policy reviews. We'll hear from the policy committee.
Well, let's see, we have some first reads, JFCK, student use of cell phones and other electronic devices. JFCK and the JFCI, which goes with it, the school rules. That was the first read tonight.
So there's no changes on that? Because one was, this was from '09, 10 years ago.
Yeah, but there is, there are a couple of things.
Well, can you tell me, because it's not marked on it?
I can, I can help you out with the essence of it if you'd like.
Go ahead, I penciled in the old one, too.
So basically, there's a list of items in the old policy that one is not to use in school, in the old policy, and it mentioned things like BlackBerries, I don't know when the last time you saw a BlackBerry, but in '09, that was quite the device, I guess, to have out in school. So we changed the language to be talking more in general of electronic devices, which will actually encapsulate future electronic devices, because Apple Watches are being used all over the place now. I wouldn't have seen that last year. So we tried to write it in a way that encapsulates any kind of electronic communication device and have policy governing what kids can and can't do with those devices. Historically, we've had a pretty great record around here, especially with teenagers and cell phones, and we want to keep that great record. And this was a way of tightening it up through policy.
So did we want to vote on that now?
Okay, so, as a first read?
Let's, we've got, let me see, we've got one, two, we've got three first reads on here. Okay, so why don't we take JFCK, JFCKR.
Which is on the back side there.
And JRAR, to be accepted as first reads tonight.
So we must have a JRA, but this is the, the rules and regulation.
Right.
So we already have a JRA, right?
Right, that's further down.
That's for notifications and rights under FERPA.
Right, that's in here. We already have one, but this, that will be a.
The R is usually the regulation.
Right.
Procedure.
Procedure.
Yeah.
So I'll look for a motion to accept those three policies as a first read.
So moved.
Second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? So moved. And the rest of them, we had first reads on last time, correct?
Yeah, the JFK, no, JKF.
I know, you want to say JFK.
Well, JFK is on there, too. JFK and JKF.
Right, okay, yeah, all right.
There you go, you got all these days.
Disciplinary removal of students with disabilities. That is.
So which is it, Kim? Is it JFK or JKF?
Oh, they're, they're two different ones.
We're on different ones.
They're on JKF.
Okay, it just looks like.
I know, because.
Looks like JKF-R should go with.
I know, because that's on the back side.
JFK.
That's the second read.
It looks like it, it looks like they should go together with the same letter.
No, no, I thought the same thing in last month when I did them as first reads. I had to change them 4,000 times in my minutes. They're both JKF.
They're both JKF.
Okay, so the stat is incorrect then in your minutes.
Yes.
What do you mean?
From last time.
Yes.
Well, that was last time. Now we're here.
So 7.2.3 should have been JKF, correct? Okay.
J.
Well, it's undecided.
Okay, so then we have JK, JKF and JKF-R.
Right.
And then JLBLCB, on immunizations, and then JLCC, which is on communicable infectious diseases, that we approved for our first reading last time.
Now, I just want to make sure, these have all gone to the teachers to show them any changes, or, right, the teachers get input on all our policies, or no?
No.
No?
Depends on the policy, if it's something to do with collective bargaining, or it might have to do with workers' rights, we would go to the union, not all of the teachers. For instance, to count, you're going to take up the calendar pretty soon, that is something we do get input from.
Right, but like the cell phone thing, no?
Oh, the cell phone, they're well aware of, we're making that, that's, yes, the teachers and students are well aware, but because we're making that, I'm making that something that we want to talk about. But as a general procedure, to answer your question, not really, we don't usually go to the staff with, run the mill things.
The JLCB, the immunization one?
Yeah.
If the state goes forward with removing the religious reason?
Yeah, we'll get.
Are as follows.
We'll get the main school management recommended language for the change in the state laws. We'll be doing some in the fall with state laws that are changing in July anyway. When Chapter 20A, Title 20A is updated, main school management will say, hey, make your local policies now match state law. That's pretty typical, yeah.
Is that where we are?
Yep.
Yep. So immunization is.
So do I have a motion to accept those four policies as second reads and adopted?
So moved.
Second it.
Okay, so we've been moving and seconded, that we adopt JKF, JKF-R, JLCB, and JLCC as, as adopted policies.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor? So moved. Been doing a good job, policy committee.
Yes, plugging along, adding to the killing of trees, but that's okay.
Adding to the killing of trees, no.
No, look at this.
Well, I know, but how else are you going to get it?
No, I know. I should have read it on the computer.
Let's go on to.
No.
You just tell me which way you want to go.
No, no, that's good.
Just this here.
That's what she wants.
All right.
She's got a house full of trees, right? Right, Janine?
Yeah.
Right? Okay, number eight, new business, and for new business, we're looking at the school calendar.
Did I make a remark about this?
Yes, I wish you would.
Thank you, okay, so the school calendar process is, it's developed out of central office, it's shared with the professional staff via their, their professional groups, both of them, it's sent out for feedback and brought back to central office. So by the time you see it, there's many renditions of this calendar, you see the one that we've all agreed we think will work for kids. The difference in this one, that I brought to the table, and it stayed, and it didn't get a lot of conversation either, because I guess people thought it was fine, is we always have two purple days in August where we bring back the staff. So those are called teacher workshop days, they're full days, beginning of the school year, and then we've historically had our third day, Columbus Day weekend, which generally follows the second weekend in October. That's how it's been. Took that day and moved it all the way back out to March, it used to be that way years ago, so that now we can do two days in August, and then get another professional day in the spring, when we've had most of the year go by, and we have things we know we need to learn or do better, and we have that day already prepaid and bring people in. Because to have two days and then have six weeks and have another day, just seemed like it, it seemed rushed. The other thing we did, too, is move parent-teacher conferences out a little later in the fall, so that we'd have more academic data to share with parents, because in our old model, we didn't have much to say, school had just started. So those are really the two changes I wanted to bring to your attention, if you hadn't noticed those.
Well, hopefully someone counted, that's a major thing.
We always do that.
Someone actually counted.
Counted.
Because of the one time many years ago.
Yes.
Okay. Because I hate to bore on some that wasn't really counted, and I'm not paying attention too much. So, the other thing is, whatever happened, and it was before your time, but we used to have actual student days before Labor Day, which brought us to be able to get out earlier in June, and that all of a sudden kind of just changed.
Student days.
So I don't know.
What was that about?
Before what day?
Labor Day weekend, we used to have, like, the kids, my kids went to school before.
Couple of days before Labor Day weekend.
Yeah.
You remember.
The teachers would come Monday, Tuesday, kids would do Wednesday, Thursday, and everybody would have a four-day weekend.
So I don't know, when did that ever switch? Because then we could get out earlier in June.
I don't know, it, it wasn't too long ago, I don't say personally, I say, woo-hoo, that we changed it.
You liked it better the way it is now?
Well, what about Sam's? I mean, you have to coincide with him.
No, we don't have to.
We don't have to.
It's convenient, too.
Yeah.